All right, my watch is showing 7:46. It's December 12th, 2013. Welcome to our Christmas meeting. This is the last meeting of the year. I would like to ask our council president, Ken Martin, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Nick Molnar will lead us in tonight's invocation. But first, let's get a roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel? Mr. Merton?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here. All right, now Ken, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this time to wish on behalf of council, city, our employees, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We look forward to 2014 being a prosperous and blessed year. Thank you.
Okay, we have some minutes from the November 14th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Next, we have a financial report. We need acknowledgment.
I'd like to make a motion acknowledging the receipt of the financial report dated November 30th, 2013, as received by the clerk or the finance director.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, the next part of our meeting is really, really important. It's a recognition of the Macedonia Fire Department. The Macedonia Fire Department has always been well-known for its accomplishments. I think today, just within the last few days, we've reached the pinnacle by having achieved something that very few can do. Chief, would you meet me in the middle and I have something for you?
Can I have my firefighters come up also there?
Absolutely.
I have proclamation here, and it says, whereas we honor today our fire department who have improved the city of Macedonia's ISO rating, that's insurance services office, classification to a Class II from a Class IV, and whereas the fire department underwent a comprehensive evaluation process in which the department's ability to extinguish fires, including water supply, dispatch, fire department organization was scrutinized, and whereas the Macedonia Fire Department currently ranks in the top 1% nationwide from the 49,000 department ISO rates nationally, and it is only one of only 32 departments in the state of Ohio out of 2,800 that has achieved this high level of classification. Whereas this occasion provides our elected leaders an opportunity to celebrate this outstanding performance and our sincere appreciation for our fire department's continued dedication to provide superior fire protection. And whereas this premier ISO 2 classification positions the city of Macedonia in securing lower fire insurance premiums for our residents and our businesses, which actually helps us to attract economic development. Now therefore, I don't know, Coach, the mayor of the city of Macedonia, to consider it a great privilege and an honor to tender this award and call upon all of our citizens to take this opportunity to express our gratitude to our fire department. Thank you.
Chief, would you like to explain something?
Well, you know, we're very excited anytime that our action can actually lower our resident's fire department. Insurance Services Office is the only company that arranges fire departments. It's based on one to 10. 10 is effectively no fire department, and it's like a golf score, so below we are, better off we are. There is no Class Ones in the state of Ohio, and there are only 32 Class Twos. This is what your insurance carrier, when you call them, they look at this number and they base your insurance rates on these numbers. That goes into the calculations. So as far as homeowners, probably not as much as we were before, but certainly for businesses, this is huge when it comes to businesses. So they pay a lot more in fire insurance. They graded us on dispatch, which we can certainly thank our dispatchers and our police department for discovering a fire, all the way through the entire process, how many times the phone rings, how many seconds, down to the second, that it takes for that dispatcher to dispatch us out, for us to respond, our training level, our water supply, our hydrant system, all of this is calculated in. It took about four days of onsite and then a whole bunch of time with our officers to be able to do this. What we put into the computer system, we have to be able to get back out, and they look at all that, so it was quite extensive. They do it about every 12 to 15 years when they come out. Our last one was 2002. So this is certainly not me, it's these guys that get all of this stuff together, and our dispatchers and Cleveland Water to be able to do this. So it is quite extensive. And working with our neighbors. When we automatically respond with Northfield Center, Sagamore Hills, and Northfield Village, when the bell rings, we all act as one. Huge. That helped us attain this. They're currently going to be going through ISO so that they can lower their current rates without help and able to do that. So we're ecstatic. So my guys did a lot of work, a lot of work. And this is not six months of work, this is five years' worth of work that was done for us to do this. Anytime that we can do something to lower our residents' insurance rates and our businesses is very important, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Okay. Now, we have our council vice president, Nick Molnar, ran a little bit of a contest. And Nick, why don't you tell us about it and fill us in on where we're at now?
A little while back, we had decided that we would like to rename our Fun Fest. So we put it out to children ages 12 and under Macedonia to give a entry for what they feel the new name of the festival should be. And we've come up with our winner, and Mayor, if I may come down here and introduce?
Absolutely.
Everyone, this is Samantha Muller. Can I say that quick? And she's nine years old. And all the entries were great, I have to say, all the children that put in for this, they all had some really good ideas, but Samantha's years really stood out. This is what she wrote. "Her suggestion is Spirit of Macedonia Festival." And her reason for that was because Colonel William Frue Long said, "There's a new spirit in Macedonia, we must not let it die." I thought that was awesome. And for that, we've got two certificates for $100. And I'd also like to thank the council members that contributed to this and put in for your suggestions, so we should be very proud. You've named our new festival, it's been a long time coming. Everyone knows I've been a strong proponent of that, and this council gave me the right to bring that back for 2014. So pretty excited about that and pretty excited about your new name, so thank you.
Good job. (applause) All right, so those were some good things happening in Macedonia. All right, we are going to get into the public comments section of our meeting. We have asked you, if you're going to speak, to sign in. We do have some people on the list this evening. We also ask you to please hold your comments to five minutes, because we've got a lot on our agenda tonight. So if you would, as you speak, please come to the microphone at the front, tell us your name and address. And this evening, we're going to start with Roy Metzl.
My name is Roy Metzl, and I live on Smoke Rice Drive, right off of the road. I was very interested tonight because I wanted to hear ODOT talk about it. I've seen this stuff in the newspaper and all this kind of about the, you know, changing that ramp. And I wholly agree with that whole concept, because I've been there for 34 years, and 82, trying to get on that ramp sometimes, and the way they had it before you put those barriers up was a nightmare. I mean, I was almost killed a couple times over there. People making left turns and two lanes of traffic, and you couldn't see them. The guy on the outside, I thought, oh, come on, you know? You almost, you know, get T-boned. And now you've got the Speedway thing, and I see people going in and out of there, half the people going in, just fly out the ramp, you know, because they don't want to go down 82, I mean down Route 8. So I think safety is the biggest factor here. You know, I mean, convenience is great, but the safety, because, you know, like, the traffic is increasing, and people wonder where it's all coming from. In about two weeks, you're going to have the Northfield Casino open up. And you're just, you know, you're asking for more traffic and more traffic and more traffic. And, you know, I love the six-lane concept, because it's going to really move stuff along. It's going to help the commons, it's going to help everybody. In fact, a lot of the businesses would probably be happy that this is all happening. And, you know, those little things you have, those barriers over there, to me, they look like little yellow bowling pins, you know? I used to bowl, so I said, what is this? You know? I mean, I'll be happy to see them go and happy to see that ramp go, even though it's very convenient, but I can get on it earlier and maybe a lot faster and move that traffic along. I've been out there sometimes at 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, and it's a mess. You know, right in that whole area is really messed up. I think, you know, that safety is a big thing, and it's not only for us. And, you know, the money, you know, money is money, right? I mean, hey, you know, if you have to spend the money, fine. You're getting somebody that's going to give you five times that value for free. They're going to do all that work and do all that wonderful stuff, and it's going to benefit us, our children, and a million people that don't even live here. That's the thing. You're getting from Twinsburg, you're getting from every direction. And so, you know, those people are not here, but you should ask them what they would like. And I'm sure a lot of them would say, hey, that's great, you know? And even the people that cut through Speedway, I mean, they're always taking a chance. They're flying around there, and, you know, they have to go in and out, and they're all around. This way, they can just one straight shot, and out they go on the freeway. So that's, trying to keep it to the five minutes. I could probably talk for two hours, but (laugh) I'll let you go.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Libby Dudus. Libby?
I live at 8584 Ravenna Road in Twinsburg. And my concern, my husband and his sister and I are owners of the freeway property that will be taken if they go through with putting the new ramp in. And I had some concerns, not so much about that. We are, will, in fact, the property was for sale, still is, but I don't think we can sell it now, with the tenants. And there was an article in the paper, we were not consulted about or did not know anything about, and the article came out that one of our tenants had been offered space in another facility for an office, and that concerned us, because she would be moving out, and then, of course, our other tenants I could see moving out. But that has been pretty much alleviated by you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. And that was my main concern, but we are willing to have the property taken if it's needed.
Thank you, Libby.
Thank you.
All right, next. Next, we have Hank Posta. Next, we have John Casmer. John?
Is there anyone after me, Mr. Mayor? I'll yield if someone wants to talk about the interstate.
There's two after you.
That might lend to continuity.
Yeah, okay, thank you, John. All right, next, we're going to have Tina Hanna.
Tina Hanna, Sew Lane. I'm a little concerned about the ramp business, because it's a lot of money. Our seniors could use a lot more things, I think, and maybe a wiser way to spend our money helping the citizens before we worry about moving a ramp. The traffic that was there, I understood. I heard Chief Golden say that there were many T-bone accidents there. And when I got the police reports and checked the accidents, I didn't see any, maybe one T-bone. A lot of rear-ending people, which happens anywhere, even if the traffic isn't bad. And Speedway people just are confused, because they don't know how to get on the ramp. I think if the freeway ramp was open, there wouldn't be half the problems at Speedway or anyplace else. I've lived here 35 years, and I go up and down that road every single day, and maybe two times of the day, there might be some traffic. And holiday traffic, you have that everywhere, if there's 100 lanes of traffic. I just think that, you know, you maybe ought to have the citizens more involved in what's going on, instead of trying to bump rush it through tonight. I always get kind of nervous when something's trying to be bump rushed and the residents don't have time to talk or ask a lot of questions. Thanks.
Barb Delugos?
Barb Delugos Valley View Road, up by Twinsburg. The lady right before me said something about to let the residents know and let them discuss it and talk about it. It was in the paper. I do the thing where I get the texts from the police department telling me what road is closed, or the gas leak yesterday, or anything. And it also mentioned that we would be having this meeting tonight. I put it on Facebook. I called all my neighbors. God, I don't see any of them here. Let the residents discuss it? Where are they? They don't. They don't care. Anyway, I think that this idea of putting the ramp on Freeway Drive is the best thing we can do. We have all the kids coming out of Bedford Road after school. I don't want to see, we have Highland Road safe now, I don't want to see another accident. Everybody would get angry, because all the left-hand turn lanes were filled with cars trying to turn left, either going into the shopping center or going onto the ramp. Opening it up again is just asking for a terrible accident to happen again. Yes, it's inconvenient for me if I run down to the bank at First Merit and then I want to go get on the freeway. Hey, if you live in Bedford, where are you going to go get on the turnpike? Not on the next street, you've got to drive all the way out here. We're lucky, we have access, so we have to drive around a little bit. Please don't open that. And I think the city should move on this quickly while we still have the, an offer to do this work.
All right, that's up to you now, John. You're up.
I'm John Casmer, resident, Chinook Trail, Macedonia. I am speaking, I'm going to change the theme here now. I'm going to talk on the Longwood Manor just for a minute, although I will say, I agree with the, I think this interstate project sounds like a good idea. I don't know about the timing either on it, but I came here to talk about something else. I represent a nonprofit group of 100% unpaid volunteers who are restoring the Longwood Manor, which is the home of the first mayor of the city, of our city, William Long. I want to congratulate the new council members and the returning council members. We look forward to working with you in the future. We've made, Longwood Manor Historical has made significant progress this year with plans and repairs. We hired an architect earlier this year at our expense, who's done a roof plan that's been approved by the building department. A site plan, he also did a site plan and a floor plan that's going to be used by the planning commission. We've completed the roof repairs with materials now that'll last for a lifetime, the slate and the copper flashing. The roof is not leaking anymore. The roof repairs also included, we completely replaced the flat roof that's on the balcony at the front of the house. And we're going to restore, we're going to put in new gutters. Those are ready to go. Hopefully, this month still, we'll get a break in the weather to put in all the new gutters and downspouts. We waterproofed the foundation, we completed the, filling in the excavation. And just to let you know, we have a licensed electrician who's already said he'll donate his services to upgrade the electrical. We have to go through, get approval from the planning commission before we can have our architect do an electrical plan for that. We also have a heating contractor who will donate his service to get the furnace working again. So we've been doing these things, repairs completely, with donations, volunteers. None of this has been at taxpayers' expense. We've gotten huge help this year. We thank the residents, Macedonia, contractors, and suppliers like Inspire Roofing. In fact, we have enough donated slate left over after we've done all the roof repairs that we can continue replacing more of the old slate roof in the spring. We're going to end up with practically a whole new roof. And I can't acknowledge everyone that's helped right now, but I want to mention a very recent donation we got from a Macedonia resident, Lauren Eisner, for $1,000. Thank you very much, Lauren. Lastly, just real brief, we've applied for a zoning conditional use permit. And I'll explain to the residents, for their benefit mostly, why that is necessary. The Manor House, as I have discovered, is zoned R1 residential. It's in the Longwood Park. Longwood Manor Historical is asking to lease the Manor from the city, like the Hen Mansion in Yew, but then reopen it in the memory of Mayor Long as a historic showplace and museum for public activities. It will not be a residence anymore. We're going to limit occupancy to 49 persons, first and second floor, and the activities will be in the house and in the immediate grounds around the house and the outdoor patio. So the impact on local residential area is going to be very minimal. Our nonprofit will maintain the Manor through donations and generating income from activities in the Manor and make it a showplace for the community. And lastly, we're also going to add a small parking lot adjacent to the gravel road. If you're familiar with the area, there's an athletic field, and there's a gravel road that goes up, and there's the Manor. So far from being an adverse impact, this is going to be an enhancement to the park in general. Right now, people at the athletic field have to park on the grass or on the gravel. So now, there will be a parking lot there. Obviously, we're not going to use it 360 days a year, so when we're not using it, it's, you know, residents can park there if they want to use the athletic field. I don't think we'd have any problem with that. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, moving on now, we're going to get right into pending and/or new legislation. And the first on the agenda is ordinance number 96, 2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 96-2013 for its third reading by title only.
In ordinance, changing the pay grade of the Assistant Building Commissioner from pay grade nine to pay grade 11 and amending ordinance 47, 2012.
Josephine, there was no second?
It doesn't have to be.
Oh, it doesn't have to be.
Not on that.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number 96-2013, according to law.
What's your pleasure?
I need a second, sir.
Second.
A second.
What's your pleasure?
Would you like me to, a roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Before I vote, Mr. Engel had asked me to hold this at second reading going into the new year until we get our budget straightened out, and so I vote no.
Mr. Merton?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Molnar?
We have talked about this at great length in the past, and I had felt that the first, I believe, three ordinances we have here should wait till January. These are ones that will not have an impact if we wait a little bit, so I vote no.
Moving on to ordinance number 97-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 97-2013 for its third reading by title only.
In ordinance, amending ordinance 42, 2013 with regard to the pay grade for the position of full-time administrative assistant of the Macedonia Service Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass and post, according to law, ordinance number 97-2013.
Roll call.
Need a second, sir?
Second.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Again, I'm holding it at second till we have a new council for Mr. Engel. No.
Mr. Merton?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
No.
Passed.
All right, ordinance number 97, 2013 passes. Moving on to ordinance 99-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 99-2013 for its third reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance, amending the An emergency ordinance amending the codified ordinances, section 1171-15B, to allow a storage barn as a non-residential use in a residential district.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 99-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Moner?
Just so we're clear, we have worked out another plan to alleviate this problem, so that's why we're, I thought all of us were gonna vote this down, but no.
Moving on, ordinance number 122, 2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 122, 2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Roll call.
No suspension needed. He's motioned that.
Okay.
Roll call's good.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
I think anytime we get a point of placement to a full-time job, we're understaffed, I'm sure, we could always use more. This is an enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Moner?
Yes.
All right, is Chris here tonight, John? Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you come forward? Here's the microphone. Your ordinance passed, you're one of us now, welcome. And tell us a little bit about yourself and if you have any family here.
I brought my wife here with me. My name is Christopher Holmes. I have worked with Westlake for the last nine years, and really looking forward to the opportunity of working for the city of Macedonia and being able to serve its citizens.
Wonderful. And, go ahead.
Officer Holmes?
Yes, sir.
What's your first job?
I've had numerous jobs over the years.
No, no, I mean as a police officer, I'm sorry.
Just patrolman.
Coming home. Your first job is to go home at night?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Each night, yeah, straight home.
I thought the police chief would've warned you, I ask all of them.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, I did want to say yes to the police officer hiring. My numbers, when we were doing, going through real fast, Mr. Martin, I wrote the wrong number down, and I want to apologize for that, but I did want to say yes to you, and I'm sorry about that. So I don't know if I can change my vote, but, just so you know that.
Okay.
I was missing that number and I forgot to look at Shane's notes.
I want to say thank you for the opportunity, for this appointment.
We're glad to have you.
Good luck seeing you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next is ordinance 123, 2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 123, 2013 for its first, second, and third reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Mr. Mayor, I...
She's gotta read it.
Pardon?
She's gotta read it.
An emergency ordinance giving consent to the Ohio Director of the Transportation to complete the realignment relocation of Sum 271 North Bon Ramp and further authorizing participation in that project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 123-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Just before I vote on this, this is probably gonna be my last council meeting here, and I've been honored to serve the city in this capacity. It was my intention that when I got on council to leave the city in better shape than when I got it. And I'm sure I have people that will disagree with me, I have, hopefully some will agree with me. We've built two bridges. When I got here, we had thousands of dollars carryover. Now we're into the, just under $4 million carryover, and we still built two bridges. I wasn't completely sold on this entrance ramp until I see the work that's gonna be done, 82. I've tried to run through there under lights and sirens myself, and it's almost impossible at certain times during the day. So I think this is a good idea, and I vote yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Well, I'm for the freeway drive project, just so everybody knows that. But I feel that going into the new, next year with the new council, and I've been asked by two of the council members that are gonna be taking the seat at the beginning of the year to hold this at first reading, and my vote is no.
Mr. Martin?
I think the Department of Transportation made a very, very compelling presentation tonight. And for anyone who believes that somehow we should delay this, when we have an opportunity here, as Mr. Barker pointed out, to improve our city, and not only to improve our city, but to improve the quality of life of our residents. Because this project would be the last major project in our community, which would alleviate the traffic problems that have plagued the city over the years. And what this council has done is, we have gone ahead and we have made really tough decisions. And those decisions have all worked out very, very well. You are elected to council to make decisions, you're not elected to council to study things, add infinitum, and wait for other people. Tonight, we need this project because the citizens of Macedonia have demanded it. Because over the past year or two, they've said, fix the problem with the 271 on-ramp. And not only that, you're getting a 300% return on your investment. For every dollar that we spend, the DOT is going to spend three. And if we don't approve it tonight, the DOT may spend nothing, and we may end up spending a lot more. Either this is done, and we do what's right for the residents, or we're just going to have more study, more activity, and the same problem plaguing us for years and years to come. I vote yes.
Mr. Miller?
When government tells you that you better hurry up and do something right away, or you're gonna lose out, you better hold your wallet. This is a case where both sides are right, and that's a problem on council. This happens many times. An improvement is gonna be a good thing, spending a half a million dollars on a road instead of half of the outdoor pool we promised our residents 12 years ago. Anytime we hurry, the city has failed. It's not a good idea to rush things. And if you're gonna tell me I gotta do it now, and I can't do it in two weeks, I'm glad it's my last council meeting. I vote no.
Mr. Moner?
I think the big piece that was missed here, and where we're falling short, is we're forgetting about the most important thing. Councilor Barker asked the new officer, what's the most important thing? Going home. What about the safety of our residents? I mean, we don't think that there's a safety aspect to what we're trying to do here. That left-hand turn lane, I don't care who we are, that's dangerous. Anyone who tells me that's not dangerous, full of it. I just, there's no way that you could say that that's not dangerous. This is a very simple safety project, which will enhance our community, which will bring us progressively forward, instead of shoving us backwards. My vote is an absolute yes.
Ordinance number 123, 2013 passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 124-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think so.
Pose?
N. Ordinance, authorizing mayor to make an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation State Infrastructure Bank for a line of credit for the improvement project known as Sum 271, PID 97084, and authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the same.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 124-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Josephine, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
To suspend the three reading rule, you have to have four council members vote, am I correct?
That is correct.
All right, so...
I had all five, I didn't hear any no's.
No, we're talking about the last.
Just the what, just right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, did you, did you say?
I said no.
I did not hear no.
Okay.
Did you say no?
I said no, yes, I did.
Okay, you did not say no.
So...
Mr. Deemer?
Take a roll call.
Okay. I did not hear that, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, I just, I had a question on that because I'm very confused at that pass just now.
Okay, I did not hear the word no.
You said, "I don't think so," Mrs. Darrow.
I said no.
No?
I wrote it down. You know, it's recorded and it's videotaped, it will do the roll calls Mr. Deemer has indicated. Mr. Barker?
This is for the suspension of the rules.
Yes, this is.
This is for the suspension, right, ma'am?
Yes. Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow? Ms. Darrow, suspension of the rules.
No.
Mr. Martin?
Mr. Deemer, does this relate to ordinance number 124-20...
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have the right one here. 123.
123.
No, we're at 124, that's adopted.
Okay, so now we're at 124?
Yes.
But her question was, the question was, don't you have to have four affirmative votes?
And I did say, you have to have, no, no, that is not the question. It, you need, it passed, if that's what you're asking.
No, we voted, we did, he said first, second, and third reading, and three of them said yes, and two of them said no.
It, it passed, it, would you, Mr. Deemer, would you explain that the adoption, that it's by majority?
We're done with 123, we're on 124.
That's what her question was.
There already was a motion to adopt. So those who made the motion to adopt, if they're willing to withdraw the motion, you can have a roll call on the suspension of the three reading rule.
Right, because they didn't...
Just so you can go on to rule, to make a decision on the adoption. It doesn't adopt it when you suspend the rules, it just allows the elimination of three readings, that's all.
Mr. Deemer, I think if you need four to move forward, correct?
Correct.
No, you need, well, yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to ask the other question.
So, Ms. Darrow voted no, that's still one, so we should still be voting on this, correct?
Yes.
All right, then what's the point in going back and doing it again if we only had one no?
On 23, you had two no's.
No, it, it's for the adoption, you just need the majority present, not, she, you have, you have the majority...
So if there was another person not here, there was only four people, and if it was a three to one, it would pass, or two to two, it would be a tie.
Would you explain that you don't need the four votes, you need the majority of those?
To suspend the rules, you need four votes. We're done with 123, we're on to 124.
The question's on 123.
Yeah, the question's on 123.
But you can't be talking about an ordinance that we already have adopted, we're not talking about a reading.
If there was an error...
Another ordinance has already been read.
They need four votes.
Suspension of the rules.
We need four yeses.
No, you don't, Ms. Darrow, you do not.
You asked our opinion, I mean, we're in the middle of a vote to adopt 124.
I'd like, I'd like to call the question.
There's one vote yes already, is that all you have?
I just want to point out that Mr. Monar did a very, very good job in explaining why this project is so important. He said the word "safety." We have spent, in some cases, $150,000 to $200,000 to make our railway passages, traffic areas in our city safer. Here, we are spending just a few dollars more to make Route 82 safer. This is what the residents have been asking for, this is what the complaints have been about in terms of sealing off that lane, and tonight, we need to do the responsible thing, because I don't think the DOT was kidding us when they said, Macedonia, if you don't approve this tonight, you're not going to see it. Because there are several other communities out there who are just as hungry as we are for a project like that, and would love to have these dollars redirected to their communities. Let's get it done.
Mr. Martin, I'm not against the project, all right? I'm against getting all of this Tuesday, and they should've came here months ago for, so we could have three readings and talk more about it and be presented. I mean, it was a nice presentation, and I, I really enjoyed it, and I learned a lot, and so did some of the residents, and I'm for this project, but...
Point of order, we're already on 124, this is...
You started the roll call on adoption, you have one yes by who?
Mr. Barker.
Mr. Barker. I'd like to call the question then, Mr. Deemer.
That takes precedence, go ahead with the roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Moner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 124, 2013 passes. Let me reiterate that this is basically a line of credit, and if we don't use it, we spend nothing to pay it off. If we use a part of it, we only have to pay off that part. We will not, hopefully, have to use all of it. But ODOT wanted this as, just in case, that shows good faith by the city that we're gonna move forward. Ordinance number 125, 2013.
Mr. Deemer, a while back, for the TIF, I believe it was the TIF or whatever, Monar had stated no on it, and it suspended everything under three reading. All right, so why is that any different tonight?
Because there were no no's.
Yeah, there was, there was...
You can't go backwards and say you said no.
Oh, this is the yes.
That's because, I can clarify that, because there was two people absent, and my no vote caused that to happen. When two people are absent, that will cause that.
Who was absent? Just Shane. Shane, it was one person absent.
Ordinance number 125, 2013, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Monar to introduce ordinance number 125-2013.
You find this funny.
I'd like to offer ordinance...
I'm glad you find it funny.
I'd like to offer ordinance 125, 2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
N. Ordinance, amending and supplementing the 2013 Annual Appropriations Ordinance number 21, 2013.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 125, 2013.
Roll call.
I need a second, sir.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Mr. Miller, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
Ordinance number 126, 2013 passes. Ordinance number 127, 2013.
125 passed.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 126, 2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose?
N. Ordinance, providing for the 2014 temporary appropriation.
And what's your pleasure?
Just a brief explanation, this is making sure that we have some money in the coffers for the beginning of 2014, because we don't generally approve our budget usually by the end of February, so this is ensuring that we can continue service in the new year. I move that we pass and post according to law 126, 2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 126-2013 passes. Ordinance Number 127-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, I'd like to offer Ordinance 127-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Pose. Roll call.
There isn't, is a no, so I did hear Ms. Darrow.
Okay.
Go ahead, do the roll call.
I'm sorry. Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
And Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Will Janice suspended? First reading?
Moving on, Ordinance Number 128-2013.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 128-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Okay, you, I'm going to read the title. I didn't get to read the last one, okay? An emergency ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Macedonia and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3947, for a three-year term effective January 1, 2014, to December 31, 2016.
We're in the 128 now, you, aren't we?
Ordinance Number 1...
Yes, that's what I just read. That's what I just read.
129.
129-2013, please.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 129-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Do you need a roll call, Josephine?
I heard that.
All right.
First reading.
An emergency ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Macedonia and Teamsters Local 436 relative to the Service Department for a three-year term.
Moving on, Ordinance 130-2013.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 131-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second. 131 or 130?
130, I can get it.
130.
I'm sorry, 130.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Do you need a roll call, Josephine?
I said no.
I heard Ms. Darrow. I heard it.
Are you saying no?
Do the roll call.
First reading.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Moving on, Ordinance Number 131-2013.
Aye, this is Ordinance 131.
The last one was about the sergeants, the sergeant's contract, so...
I'd offer Ordinance 131-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Aye.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
First reading, please.
An ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Macedonia and the patrolman's, Police Patrolman Officers Benevolent, Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association. It's a three-year term.
And what's your pleasure? Oh, I'm sorry, that was first reading. Ordinance Number 132-2013.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 132-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
No. Oh, sorry, I dropped the gun. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 132-2013 had its first reading. We'll move on to 133-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 133-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. M, um, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance 133-2013 had its first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As I understand this...
It's 132.
And I'm, I'm referring to 133 here. Does this, okay, I withhold that question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Josephine, please tell me what number we're on.
134.
Thank you. Ordinance Number 134-2013.
Mayor, may I ask a question before we do this?
Sure.
I think this is kind of an important one, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same understanding. If we don't pass 134, do these people lose their health care, Scott?
Yes.
I mean, I will make sure we're all aware, they will not have health care if we do not pass this.
I want to point out, Nick, that if this is not, that if this is not passed tonight, I am not in favor of canceling the meeting on the 26th of December, because we need to get back here and do business. Because right now, there's some political gamesmanship being performed here that is not in the best interest of this city nor its employees. And quite frankly, it's, it's a bit embarrassing.
You're actually speaking too soon.
Yeah.
No, but he's right, because these other ones, and, and I get it, I understand what's going on, but we've got our policemen, our firemen, we've got our entire residents, these are contracts that have been negotiated for months, this people livelihood on it, and we have a job to make a decision.
Can you tell me the aspects of the contract that you're voting yes on? Have you looked at it?
Yeah, I have. There was vacation changes in there, there were some changes with, uh...
It's just first reading. It's going to go through, we're just doing first reading on this stuff. Okay, we're, Josephine, we're at 134, I think you have to read it now.
You can argue whether this council or the next council makes these decisions, but I think, under the circumstances, the right thing to do would be to pass this on to them.
I'm not willing to let our employees go without health care.
That's for sure.
Well, you guys, let's read the ordinance here, so we can go on. You don't even know what...
You're assuming what's going to happen, and we know that's a big mistake.
Ordinance Number 135-2013.
No, 134.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 134-2013 for its first re, uh, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And now I hope I'm reading the right one.
Yes.
You are, 134.
It's 130.
It's regarding health care benefits.
Yeah.
And ordinance, amending the codified ordinance 16120 regarding health care benefits for non-contract Macedonia employees.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, Ordinance Number 134-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance 134-2013 passes. For general knowledge, I'd like to state that the city now will be grouped with other cities in Summit County, and we will be all working together with the hopes of keeping costs of insurance coverage down, so that we can keep our taxes and our, our income at the same rate. So, we'll move on to Ordinance Number 135-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 135-2013 for its first, second, and third reading.
Second.
Title only.
Sorry, Ken, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
End, uh, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Delta Dental Insurance for dental benefits for eligible Macedonia employees for year 2014.
Mr. Mayor, move we pass and post according to law, Ordinance Number 135-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Moving on to Ordinance Number 136-2013.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 136-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
End ordinance renewing the EAP contract with Tri-County Employee Assistance Program for year 2014.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, Ordinance 136-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 136-2013.
137.
2013 passes. Ordinance Number 137-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 137-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
End ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission for the representation of indigent persons charged with violations of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, move we pass and post according to law, Ordinance Number 137-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance 137-2013 passes. Resolution Number 138-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution Number 138-2013 for its first reading by title only.
Thank you.
This just requires a motion to adopt.
This is for the appointment of Ms. Monar to the Recreation Commission.
Well, I, I wanted that, I was going to kind of nominate Nick, since he did such a great job on the committee for renaming the, um, the fund days, that I thought maybe, I was going to nominate him to the Rec Center next year. So, I didn't know if Jennifer could be actually on.
Well, Nick would be council's representative.
I know that.
But...
So, I just, I was just going to do first reading.
If he accepted, I'm, but then you have husband and wife.
I was just going to nominate him next year, that's all.
So, in other words, what you're saying is that would be a good way to bump my wife off of the commission.
No, I don't know.
Let me point something out to you, and I, I really wanted to avoid this, but my wife has gone to these meetings, and I had asked her, is this something you truly want to do, because you know with my position what this can bring? She waddled her nine-month-pregnant body into those meetings to be a part of that, and this is the thing she gets.
No, I mean, we can, I can do three readings, but I was just going to wait and ask.
This is a shame. You should be ashamed of yourself for doing that, and I am appalled by it.
You protest too much.
Yeah. I mean, Nick, if you want me to do three readings, I would, but I was...
All she did adopt is an order...
Let's vote.
There's been no motion, a second.
I make a...
I make a motion that we adopt.
Go ahead, Mike.
Of what readings?
Because we can't predict what's going to happen.
Yeah, what, what readings?
First, second, and third.
All right, so we need to adopt that.
There's no suspension needed for, this is in the...
Oh, okay, now we got it. So, alls we do right now?
You got a motion to adopt by Mr. Miller, we need a second.
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 Okay. Now, what's your pleasure?
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow? Ms. Darrow?
I'm just going to say yes. Just, I was just going to, I could do the three readings for him if he wants. I just was...
I thought that's our...
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Mollner?
Obey.
Resolution 138-2013 passes. Moving on to resolution 139-2013.
I'd like to offer resolution number 139 for its first, second, 2013, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Yes, the motion to adopt's okay if you want to dispute that. Again, this is just a resolution that does not require suspension of rules or reasons. Want to convert that to a motion?
Yes.
Second, okay?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mollner?
Yes.
Resolution 139-2013 passes. Moving on to resolution number 140-2013.
No, I'm not, I'm not doing it.
I'd like to offer resolution 140-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's in a minute.
Opposed?
Oh, it's the lead. It's the one that you prepared for Mr. Mollner.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Mayor, if I may speak before we read this, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
There's been a lot of problems with clear reads, and if anyone here has experienced the clear reads upgrade, as they call it, generally what's been happening to people is their bills are doubling, sometimes tripling, sometimes quadrupling. I personally experienced it, and the reasoning I got behind it was, well, you probably have an underground leak, you need to get a plumber out. I called the plumber out, we found nothing. Then they said that there's two units, there's an outdoor unit that measures the water, there's an indoor unit. Well, the outdoor unit wasn't reading right, the indoor unit was, and when the guy pressed everything into it, it came up while you owed double. In addition to that, there was a, or I'm sorry, there was a, Channel 3 News had something on, I think, Monday where a gentleman had the very same thing, and when he got the media attention, same types of problems and issues I'm having, same types of problems, issues I'm getting from people, it's all over Facebook, social media. I think they're gouging people, and this is what this ordinance is going to try and stop. Something's not right about it. It seems awkward to me that my bill's doubled. As a matter of fact, my wife called there today to ask them why we're still getting a bill for another $195 extra dollars. No one can seem to tell us where it's coming from, why we have it, or what I can do about it. So essentially what this is going to do is begin the ball rolling. What I'd like to see happen is other communities become involved in this because this is a big issue. And the only time I've seen any resolution is when Channel 3 News got involved, which I think is a shame. So this is my effort to try and begin that for our community and potentially others.
I really have to commend you, Nick, because as mayor of this city, my phone rings constantly with complaints about this. It's bureaucracy at its worst. I actually took some of those complaints and sent them into the PUCO and demanded them take action and got not an answer, not even an answer. So thank you very, very much for bringing this up. We need a, this for three readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, what I'd like to do is, I'm very concerned that we had a number of ordinances, contract approvals, that were held at first reading. I'm not going to hold our employees hostage. What I want to do is, next Thursday, Josephine?
Yes, sir.
I want to schedule a work session of council that will start at 6:30 PM. And I want all council members to know that they will be expected to be there, and they will be expected to find out what's in these contracts and have all of their questions answered, so that when we have our next council meeting on the 26th of December, we'll be able to approve these contracts, so our employees don't have to be concerned what's going to happen to their jobs, their pay, and their benefits over the holidays. So we're going to have a work session next Thursday, and anyone who has questions, and I have to remind you that it is incumbent upon you as a councilperson to study the legislation, learn the legislation, and if you have any questions, ask questions, come there prepared. And then we will have a council meeting on the 26th of December, the day after Christmas, and we will take a vote on this legislation, and that way, everybody who's concerned about questions and about finances and about what's going to take place, we can get this done.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
For our council meeting, is there a different date that we can choose other than that one?
May I enter into this, please?
Sure.
Mr. Martin. According to our codifieds 121.01, as mayor, I can call a special meeting, and according to section 4.08 of our charter, we're all compelled to attend. Since the only things that will be addressed is going to be these contracts, I would like the meeting to be right after the work session. So whatever time the work session's done, we just go right into our meeting, vote, and we're done.
I have a question, Scott. These contracts, can they be held over until the beginning of the new year when there's a new council?
It depends on what date they were ratified. Some contracts will expire without any action of council and be effective 30 days after.
Automatically, whether we vote on them or not.
Yes, sir.
So there is no need to have a special meeting?
Right.
Or a work session at all? By Ohio law?
Yes, sir, by Ohio law.
Yes.
There are certain terms in these contracts that if they're not placed by January 1, will negatively impact the employees.
And what are those?
For instance, the Teamsters have 2% pickup that expires under the old language at the end of 2013. Under the new language, we put that into the contract so that it doesn't have that sunset. So technically on January 1, they're going to have a 2% pay decrease.
And the new council...
The rates of pay for incentives...
Right, they can...
The city contracts now do not work under our new scheme. We have a four-tier healthcare plan that we just set up that's going to save the city a tremendous amount of money going forward. We have employee plan, employee spouse plan, employee child plan, and family plan. And the current rate structure doesn't take that into account. We just have single and family.
I'm just assuming that it wasn't your idea to wait till the last council meeting of the year to do this.
We just settled with all the contracts.
So it just happened?
Yes, we just settled.
What day?
I have them right here, Mike.
Beginning on healthcare, September 1.
No, but one day that it's finished.
November 26?
Yeah, he did a roll call.
Please settle November 25. The other contracts all settled within this last week.
Okay, and this is coming before us today?
I don't know if there's been...
That's not a good way to do business, period.
There's been another council schedule.
You know, Betsy, thank you very much for your input. I have called a special meeting after next week's work session.
Next week is the 19th, right, Josephine?
It's a Thursday.
I can do that. I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Ken?
I'm the one who set this meeting? I guess so.
Mike?
I'll probably not make it.
Rita?
Well, I'll be here, whatever you want.
Okay. That's fine. Just, we need four. We need four to move forward.
And Mr. Engel will be notified as well.
He'll be here.
He'll be notified.
Okay.
So just for purposes of clarity, for the agenda, that it would be the items that were all first reading, 127, 28, 29, 30, 131, I'm sorry, 131, 132, and 33.
Okay, and could I ask that, so that we're clear here, that the new council taking their seats in January, that they have copies of these contracts?
They've all been sent.
Okay.
The council-elect has been sent everything. Council has been set...
For them to look at, okay.
Since the election.
All right, because that was what...
They have received everything via email.
Mr. Engel had asked me to hold everything at first reading, and that's what I did for the new council.
Wait a minute here, you should be voting for yourself, Rita.
I did. I held it at first reading. I don't feel these emergencies can wait.
There have been ordinances in the past where Mr. Martin was absent and something was voted out that he wanted.
And I fought against it for him.
Okay.
And I stood behind Mr. Martin.
All right, resolution number 140-2013 is on the floor.
I will second that because actually Cleveland Water came onto my place last January, the inside one was not working. I'm not sure what's going on with that, so I second it, yes.
If my water bill comes, I just pay it because the consequences are not good.
All right.
Went out on lawyers like you.
Everyone had said...
All, we're going for third reading here. We have a motion and we have a second for third reading, or are we already on?
I think we're all past that.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
We're all, I think we're all past that.
All right, so it passed?
Yes.
We don't need our other motions or legislative actions.
Well, Mr. Martin had kind of jumped in. We hadn't, yeah, no, we still need to stick with the agenda.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we cancel our regular meeting of council on Thursday, December 26th, observance of the Christmas week.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mollner?
I want to be real clear, and I hate to be personal as I have today, but on that date, my wife will be delivering my next child, so I'm sorry. I'm not going to be here.
You're excused. Congrats.
So we don't have a meeting on the 26th?
We...
No, there's a no.
What's the count, Josephine?
Well, we voted yes, sir.
No, he voted, cancel it.
I'm sorry, to cancel the meeting.
You voted yes.
Cancel the meeting, I'm sorry.
So the canceled wins.
That's his delivery date. Cancel it.
All right, I guess that's the end of motions or other legislative actions unless there are some I'm not aware of.
I'll do it. Mayor, I'd like to add one resolution to the table, and I'm going to give the clerk a break on this one, so I'm going to read it for you.
Okay, thank you.
The resolution, oh, I'm sorry, I need to introduce it.
We need to put it on the agenda.
I'd like to add resolution, another resolution to the floor.
It'll be 141?
141, 2013, for three readings, and this is a resolution essentially for our council people that are leaving.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Resolution of commendation and gratitude to the councilpersons Kenneth Martin, Michael Miller, and Shane Barker for their years of service to the city of Macedonia. Whereas councilpersons Kenneth Martin, Michael Miller, and Shane Barker will be concluding their tenure of service to the city this year, and whereas they should be recognized for the countless hours spent by them for the good of the city and all the city's residents and businesses, and whereas they saw fit to answer the call to public office, fully well-knowing the nature of the task they faced and did so energetically and enthusiastically, and whereas the mayor, department heads, all of council, and the employees of the city of Macedonia on behalf of all the residents and businesses of the city wish to extend their thanks and appreciation to Mr. Martin, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Barker.
Thank you, Nick.
All in favor? Roll call. Roll call, Josephine.
Mr. Barker? Well, it's a little awkward, don't you, you can say, yeah, it's a little...
Thank you very much, yes.
That's cute.
All right, I think it's time to move on. No, I think, I think it's time for us to move on, but I just want to say that Councilman Mollner, that was very well said, and it's very much deserved by these three men. I've known them all for years, and there's been contention at times, but the main thing is that we keep Macedonia moving forward, and that seems to be the line that has happened over my 10-year tenure. And some of the people that will be leaving have been here almost that long with me. So I would like to thank them because you've helped make Macedonia a destination to move us forward. Moving on to correspondence from the clerk?
I don't, I didn't bring it with me, sir.
All right, moving on to the mayor's report. I don't think it'll be too long. I have to apologize tonight because we had so much legislation. Legislation builds up because we didn't have one meeting in November because of Thanksgiving, and then, of course, this month, we had this big look. My staff and I met with the vice president in charge of consumer repairs, the bridge engineer, and the lawyer representing Norfolk Southern Railroad on Tuesday at 1:00 PM. Representing the city, beside me, was our law director, Joe DeMert, engineer, Nick Feeney, building commissioner, Mike Ladd, service director, Jim Digatano, structural engineer, Ryan Cummings from GPD, and councilman Shane Barker. I think we had the winning team. Whenever you deal with the railroad, the process moves very slowly with baby steps each meeting. I know this only too well because this is the fourth time I am in negotiations with them. This is the third bridge, and the fourth negotiation was the quiet zone at the eighth-grade crossing on Twinsworth Grove. What's it like to deal with them? Here are some four instances. Their engineers say the bridge is fine structurally. Ours say prove it because we don't think it is. They say we should build a new bridge because the road needs to be wider. I say, I think your bridge infringes on our right-of-way for Ledge Road. Safety reasons, safety for residents from debris and from derailment was stressed by Councilman Barker stating he fears a bad accident there. And so it goes. Did we win this battle? I think the issue will be, can we win the war and get a new bridge without it costing us any money? ODOT was present at the meeting, and because of the widening of Interstate 271, there may be a door open to get Ledge Road bridged, much like there's a door open to get our ramp. They might never come again, so there might be financial assistance between ODOT and the railroad. So as much as a pain it's going to be when they widen 271, this might work for Macedonia's benefits. Why? Because the bridge abutments for the overhead 271 bridge are right next to the Ledge Road Bridge. Something's got to give. In the meantime, Norfolk Southern has agreed to put in place further measures to protect us from falling debris from the crumbling bridge, so if you see them working there, that's what they're doing. They're going to put a netting and then another netting so that they can keep both large and small debris from falling. There's just another quick reminder about how important it is to get our police bulletins through NICSIL on your phone. Just last night, there was a neighborhood gas leak that could have led to an evacuation. That message was sent out with NICSIL. If you are not signed up and you did not get that information immediately, like those that have subscribed did, it's very easy. It's not as easy to turn the page. Just send our zip code, 44056, to 888777, and that's all you have to do, and you're registered. Also, our Macedonia app has been working well, and people are using it to contact City Hall with various issues. If you have a smartphone of any kind, you can get our app by going to your app store and searching My Macedonia, lowercase, all one word. Chuck hole season is upon us, and this app will help you to notify us of their location. If you take a picture of that chuck hole with your camera, it will tell us the exact GPS location, so you don't have to tell us, well, you know, it's by the White House on Valley View. No, it'll tell us exactly. Our court receipts for November were $29,462.21, and that ends my mayor's report, so we need committee reports next.
Mr. Mayor, on the 9th, December 9, 2013, planning met, and we were, we had proposed wall mount signage to the vitamin shop at 463 East Aurora Road, and also a proposed vacay modification to the Macedonia Commons. Our next planning meeting will be held December 23, 2013, at 5:15. This is a public hearing that is scheduled, and immediately at 5:30, our planning meeting will take place. And I don't have any other information on it.
All right, as far as the JED Board met, and we were dispersing money is basically what this is about. It used to be the JED Board met four times a year. We're down to meeting one time a year because it's all about the money. They share in tax receipts we get from the stores that are located in the crossings, which is the shopping center where Lowe's, Giant Eagle, Target are at. Can you please give me some figures, Scott, as to what was dispersed?
Yes, sir. We collected, we've dispersed $100,000 each for the first three quarters, and then we had $60,000 left, and we agreed with the township Northville Center to disperse additional $30,000 for each. So year to date, we've received $259,000 in revenue, and we had $69,000 unexpended before we went to the meeting yesterday, and we're going to give out $60,000, a whole $9,000 in there.
All right, and the only other business discussed really at that meeting is a right-in, right-out, off of Route 8, going into that shopping center. Ms. Darrow, who's a member of the JED Board, repeated over and over and over, it's about safety, safety, safety. In order to do that, we need the shop owners there, the companies that own the properties, to pay for the new road that will come from Route 8 into that shopping center. We have secured puncturing a limited access highway. That's so hard to do that the road was always on the map for that shopping center, but they could never get approval to make it there. Now I have approval. Now I need those shopping center people to get on board and spend some money. It would be assessed against them, but Dan Stanko, the owner of Chick-fil-A, who's been very, very helpful to this whole process and keeping this going, stated to me that when he did all the figuring, the job is roughly figured to be about $800,000, and that's just for that driveway, and puncturing and getting the right-of-way into Route 8. ODOT has agreed possibly to waive the puncturing, so that takes the job down to $650,000. If they spend that, that's their end of the deal. From then on, we'll build it to city specs, and it'll become a city street which will be plowed and maintained by the city of Macedonia. It's a good deal for everybody. It's not just about bringing in more customers. Dan Stanko said figuring it all out, it would have to be about one more customer a day for him, and he would be able to pay off that road. So that's not really a lot, and it would be a safety feature to have another egress and ingress into that shopping center. Moving on with department reports, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just real briefly, the heat program is, it's still... Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just real briefly, the leaf program is still going on, so anybody concerned about their leaves getting picked up, they are going to get picked up. Between the leaves falling late, early snowfall, major breakdowns, it's been pretty rough. We only had three machines. Two of them went down, blown clutches and impellers. And it's pretty costly to fix them. One of the pieces came out December 6th, and the other one's still in the shop waiting for parts. So, but we are working our way into the, we already started the third round. If we're having any more problems, we should be done hopefully within a week or so. But we're going to continue until we get them done. And I really apologize for any inconvenience this may have caused, but we have no control when these things happen.
You know, it's so sad that somebody put down a bunch of bricks and some scrap metal, and then put their leaves on top of them. Damn.
Is that what happened?
Yep.
To one of the machines, yes.
That's a criminal offense.
That should be.
Close to $4,000 damage.
Remember, I'm a bagger.
All right, Jim, why don't you tell the folks a little bit about Brian, real quickly?
Real quick, we, our liquid de-icer equipment, we've used it twice already, and it's working really nice. I mean, with the salt also, we're able to pre-treat. We went ahead on Sunday, like, you know, we knew an ice storm was coming. We went out during the day, one truck, one man, and he was able to take care of all the hills, curves, and some intersections, and we were ready for it, and we had no ice problems.
And this will give us safer streets, because, say, for instance, if the street was going to be slushy, now it would be wet.
Yes.
So this is good stuff, folks. How long does it last?
It lasts for, it's good to eight degrees below zero.
All right.
Last most for a storm.
For a storm.
Mm-hmm.
And if it doesn't storm, and maybe three days later after you put it down, it's still down. Good. That's what we need to know. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Martin, Mr. Barker, and Mr. Miller for their service. Enjoyed working with you guys. Appreciate that. GFS is under construction. They're working on the pad, and we've got the excavator out there. We start the sewers pretty soon, and the assisted living center is on for a public hearing on the 23rd. They might be paying for a special meeting to be put on the agenda at a different date, but the public hearing will be that date. I'll keep everybody informed on that. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thanks, Mike. Angela?
Thanks, Mayor. There's still some time left for those who want to drop off their letters to Santa. We have a mailbox in the lobby of the Recreation Center for the North Pole. We have through December 16th for the kids to get their letters in, to give Santa plenty of time to respond before he gets busy closer to Christmas. If you're looking for something for your children to do during their break from school, during their winter break around the holidays, we do offer a winter holiday camp for children. We do also offer before care and after care for those of you who are working parents. If you'd like more information on that, you can go to our website, or you can call the Recreation Center. Lastly, the next session for swim lessons begins the week of January 6th, but registration does begin December 16th for members, the 19th for residents, and then the 21st for the general public. So the deadline for swim lessons is January 2nd. After that, if we do still have room available, there is a late fee that is assessed. However, most of those classes in January do fill up, so I would encourage you to register early if you do plan on enrolling your children in those programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. The report that I handed out to council, just a quick highlight. I projected for our estimated revenue for income tax this year in the general fund at $6,800,000. We received $610,000 for month-to-date receipts, which brought us over the amount I estimated. We have $7,142,000, which is a collection of 105%. And also in the, you know, the quarter percent also split between the rec center fund. And I predicted $915,000 for them, and we surpassed that last month. With the collections of $87,000 month-to-date receipts, we had $1,018,000, which brings a total of over $103,000. So income tax, again, is up overall. We are finishing at the end of November with both the rec center and total income tax collected. We hit over $8 million, $8,72,000, and our high previous to that was last year, $7,817,000. So we've already over $200,000 in collections from last year, and with the anticipation of December also being a stronger month, probably at least $600,000. So we've conservatively budgeted the last three years, and I'm hoping that it's going to be able to get us through until the rec center and the safety building has paid off those last debts in 2017. I also want to wish all of council outgoing council well, and I appreciate all the work they've done behind the scenes. It's quite a job, and I, you know, experienced it myself. And a lot of the time, other than the council meetings, what you guys put in gets unrecognized, and each one has a different personality, and each one will miss in a special way. I want to thank you, though, because getting, getting out there, you know, it's, you're put through the meat grinder, there's no doubt about it.
Scott?
Just give me some money, Scott.
Yeah.
That'll make me feel better.
Scott, if you could just reiterate what we said during the work session about unencumbered balance?
Yes, sir. Right now, as again, me and Mr. Moller have a little game about unencumbered, unencumbered balance, and right now, we have, in the general fund, unencumbered balance, $3,587,000. Unexpended balance, $3,854,000, and that doesn't include the two reserve funds of a half a million dollars. Emergency Reserve Fund, which was still here before I had started, and then council elected, we put in $500,000 in our retirement reserve fund to fund our liabilities for retirement people. So we have a healthy carryover. We started the year with all funds, $6,276,000, and right now, our unencumbered balance is $6,977,000, and that's reflective of the November payments of the rec center and debt, which is over $1 million. So we have one more payroll left, and we're in good financial shape.
Great. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the proclamation. That was, the guys worked really hard on that, and I don't want to go through all of that again. But I do urge that business owners and homeowners to contact their insurance companies. This will take place next year, and you might see a reduction in your fire insurance costs, especially for some of our larger businesses. This should help us with any type of economic development in the city. If they're, if they're on the fence, and they look at the insurance rates, their insurance rates are going to be much cheaper coming here than, than other places. I'd like to also say that we're set for a record year call, volume-wise. Right now, we're about 70 calls above our record year. It looks like we're going to fall unless everything shuts off, and we have nothing, which I doubt. We're going to have well over 1,500 calls, which will be a record year for, for our department to handle. Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week, we have our Santa gift giveaway. So if you see trucks out, please be cautious driving around them. So we will have two sets of trucks out for our Santa gift giveaway. And then also, if we do get into heavy snows, which I hope we don't, but if we do, please clean out around your hydrants. If you're unable to clean out around your hydrants, give the fire department a call, and we'll be happy to come out and make sure. We need those fire hydrants if we, very quickly, if we get a fire, and sometimes they can easily be plowed under, and we'll come out and shovel them out and make sure that they're visible, so that we can gain access to them.
Great.
That's all I have, Mayor.
And again, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
For all that you do. Nick?
Mayor, I have a little report. All of our would love to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, special presents given for them. Thank you.
All right. Joe?
Yes, Mayor. Tomorrow is the mediation on the plot case against the city. We hope that we can try and resolve that matter and get it off the books. I want to highlight again how great our firefighters and fire department is. I've been doing this for over 40 years in dozens of communities, and I can't remember but a handful of times that anyone's insurance rate has been lowered. And it is totally up to your firefighters and the manner in which they operate that allows that to occur. So I'd like to just make another note how important that is for all our citizens and businesses, because it does come to your bottom line every year, and how much you benefit from that. I'd like to say also, I would enjoy working with the council members and wish you well, and will always be here to help you. If you need anything, feel free to give us a call back. I assume you're going to stay as residents in the community, so we will always be here to help you out. Other than that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. All right, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, Mayor. At the end of the two terms, I was looking back and noticing that you and I have agreed much more than we've disagreed. We've accomplished much more than most mayor, councilmen could have ever hoped for. Every aspect of this town is in better shape now than it was in 2005. Every department, our rec center's in good hands, our service department's in good hands, our fire department has improved, our police department has improved, our building department has improved. And it's been an honor to serve with you as a counselor, an advisor, as a father figure. It's been an honor to serve with Ken Martin, who had taught me one thing, and I'll never forget it, and I use it daily, and Shane Barker, who taught me a lot of things that I use daily. And if I can serve in any capacity, I'm available. I wish our new council replacements the best. If I can help in any way, you know my phone number. I have been living here since 1986. I don't plan on moving yet, but I have some pressure to do. So thank you for your friendship and your leadership, and there's much still to be done.
Thank you. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say that this, the day after Thanksgiving, well, John's back now, it's actually to John, the police department. I was driving through the commons, and it was so nice to see these young police officers walking, going door-to-door and checking on all the businesses, and making sure everybody was okay and safe, and they were on, on walking. And I even stopped and thanked them. I thought that was tremendous. I've never seen that before. In all the years I've been in Macedonia, have I ever seen the patrolman out walking and greeting everybody, and actually opening that door, and asking everybody if everything's okay. It was awesome. And I want to thank you, John, and I want to thank the police department, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'll actually miss Ken and Shane and Mr. Miller, and I'm looking forward to serving with Jan Tully and Sylvia Hannigan and Mr. Engel again. Thank you.
All right, any new business? Motion to adjourn?
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, and Merry Christmas.